Good evening. I wish to call the Lee County Board of Commissioners to order on this Monday, April 3rd, 2023. I'd like to thank everyone for attending this evening. If you would please stand for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The Congressional Chaplain Reverend Dr. Sutherland on January 7th of 1862 gave the following to the 37th Congress. "O thou deisius from thy throne, all the inhabitants of the earth, by whose favor the nations flourish, as by thy frown they fall; we pray thee for succor in this our time of need, as our fathers prayed before us. Give us the foresight and the discretion of thy wisdom that we may know what to do and wherewithal to perform it. Imbue the whole heart of the nation with religious faith, so that none among us may profane in any wise before thee. Fill us with the solemn spirit and the awful majesty of this crisis. Let every man forbear levity, and there be no trifling Nero in the midst of burning Rome; that each may be virtually and vitally in earnest, bearing his life in his hand, and moving gravely, as a living sacrifice upon the altar of God and of country, of freedom and of religion. O thou sovereign, our own and hope, prepare thy servants and thy whole people, to vindicate them in thy sacred cause, thine honor and thy name in the sight of all generations." Amen. And that's a quote. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for All right, we have the, anything additional we wish to add to the agenda?
Without objection, I would move that we do the, I think it's, hold on a second. Item 5B on the new business.
5B from new business, which move it to the consent agenda?
Yes.
Item 5B. Move to the consent agenda. Madam Attorney, is there any issue with that? Any other additional agenda items? It has been moved to move 5B to consent agenda. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make one comment on that. I think I'm definitely in concert with what Commissioner Reeves is saying. And we just need to note in this conversation how important this is because it relates to the ability of the Department of Juvenile Justice to do their work, particularly in the area of recidivism. In other words, it's hard if they can, they just do the basics and they don't have the chance to have relationship with those individuals and their families. So it's important to note that this is, this is enthusiastically supported.
Duly noted. Any other comments? All those in favor for moving the item 5B to the consent agenda, a resolution supporting compression increases for the North Carolina Division of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Detention Youth Development Center and Court Services staff. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. You have the consent agenda before you with the addition to 5B from new business. Any other discussion?
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made to approve the consent agenda as amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion approved.
Motion's been made to approve the agenda as amended. Everybody else is rushing for their phones. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comments. And because we had a very astute constituent make a recommendation yesterday, we now have the clock on the screen. So what, I have a list of names here. The first individual is Mr. John Kirkman. Sir, please come forward. State your name and your address.
I'm John Kirkman. My address is 3307 English Circle in Sanford, and I live in the Sedgmore Community within Carolina Trace. I'm here this evening to speak against the proposed RV park on Swan Station Road. Our concerns about pollution and silt runoff from the RV park into Morris Pond and downstream into Carolina Trace are well-founded. Lake Trace is one of the most important attractions of our community, and maintaining a healthy lake is very important to us. Unfortunately, we've had a previous painful experience when our lake was damaged by runoff. My house is located on a hill looking down on Car Creek, which feeds through part of Carolina Trace, and that Car Creek feeds into Car's Pond, and that feeds into Lake Trace. When the bypass for Highway 87 was being built, we experienced terrible runoff of silt. Looking down at the Car's Creek, it was really muddy most of the time. That mud filled up Car's Creek, and then when it was full, it kept going on down into Lake Trace. Our community had to spend in excess of $900,000 to clear that mess up. And the inconvenience of having a settling pond right next to Trace Way, which is our primary road inside of Trace, every time we had a heavy rainstorm, the roads were closed because of the flooding caused by the water not being contained within Car's Pond. So I urge you to vote against the RV park. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next individual on the agenda is Dennis K.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Dennis K. I live directly across the, across the street from the proposed Swanee Lake RV Resort at 4188 Swan Station Road. I spoke at the last Commissioners' meeting, and as the weeks have passed in attending two zoning board meetings, I'm still in opposition of this proposal for multiple reasons. The two entrances are between a top hill and a curve at the bottom side. We've seen accidents in this small area several times due to speed and people not being able to stop in time for turning traffic. A RV park of this type will, I believe, will decrease the value of our homes due to the undesirable location of the RV park for current residents to sell or future residents looking to move into the area. I still question how Sanford will benefit from this RV park. Is there not many local activities or tourism in the proximity that would warrant this type of RV park, with the exception of maybe Carolina Trace? We did ask Mr. King and Mr. Blakely at our first meeting who they would market their RV park to, and they did not have an answer for it at that time. I also question what will happen once this RV park is sold after a few years, as of many of his other previous adventures. We have voiced our concerns over who will govern this park. There are special requirements for this RV park, as it was made clear during the planning meeting that the county does not have the mechanism or capacity to enforce stipulations placed on the development. Public record shirts, a public record search showed a variety of issues of Mr. King's previous business practices, history that were sent to all the Commissioners. Coincidentally, not that I really believe in coincidences, approximately an hour after that email was sent, Mr. King arrived at our residence, as captured by security cameras. Neither my wife or I were home at the time. His reasoning for coming to our home is unknown, as we have nothing to discuss, nor do we routinely converse with Mr. King. For these reasons, I believe there should be a resounding opposition for allowing this development to go through as planned. I urge the Commissioners to consider these facts and vote in opposition to keep this project from coming to Lee County. Thank you for your time and opportunity to speak out against this project.
Thank you, sir. Next individual is Heather Moore. Again, please state your name and your address as well.
Hi, everyone. My name is Heather Moore. I live at 4029 Swan Station, directly adjacent to this property. My husband and I, we certainly continue to oppose this RV park for several reasons. First, the development is not appropriate for residential countryside, and this density is extreme. This property is 57 acres, but Morris Pond represents 47% of that. So we're talking about 80 RV sites, two homes, and a few basic amenities being developed within 30 acres. We could potentially have hundreds of people living within this park with no visibility into who's living there. There's also the environmental impacts that I want to echo, you know, given the significant tree removal and grading. Our connected ponds, creeks, and Lake Trace will be impacted by sediment pollution, and if there's a failure in the septic system, all those chemicals and waste could certainly end up in those same water sources. Of course, traffic safety remains a concern due to all the construction and commercial traffic that already flows between 87 US1 and the quarry. And, you know, this park will not bring tourism dollars. I even called four RV parks in surrounding counties just to get a confirmation of who's staying within those parks, and a majority, if not 100%, of those renters are contractors. They're not seasonal vacationers with all this tourism money to spend in the area. And if renters can stay in this park for 180 consecutive days, that would certainly be attractive to people looking for alternative housing, not vacationers. And regardless of what rules and conditions are in place, Lee County doesn't have a dedicated enforcement team, so any violations would involve a very slow and ineffective process to investigate and take action. And considering the developer sold his previous RV parks and has documented instances of noncompliance, it is our opinion that he won't be here for the long term. So finally, I just ask that your vote reflect our, the core values espoused by this board. If you truly value our citizens, communities, and families, you will vote against this development. Please don't be like a member of the Planning Board who openly said in the first planning meeting that he would not want this type of development in his backyard, but then proceeded to vote for it anyway. Please vote as though this park will be in your neighborhood, right beside your home. Thank you.
Thank you. Next individual Rodney Alred. And again, sir, please state your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Rodney Alred, and I live and co-own the property of 4025 Swan Station Road, adjacent to the proposed RV park. I firmly stand against the rezoning request by Mr. Vaughn to allow the creation of an RV campground at Morris Pond on Swan Station Road. Other than the massive amount of vehicles that already travel this road, it is a tranquil area that a business like this campground will forever destroy. The property owners near this location have already brought many concerns, both about the business and the character of Mr. Vaughn's past financial issues, which are a matter of public record. My concerns are primarily the destruction of our way of life that we now enjoy with a peaceful view of Morris Pond by leaving next door to a property, to the property or driving by it. In closing, I would ask you to consider the following question when voting on this request. Would you like this RV campground next to your home? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next on the list is Julie Kelly. And Julie, as likewise, state your name and your address, please.
All right, so I am Julie Williams. I reside at 3942 Swan Station Road. Myself, like many of my neighbors who have spoken before me and will speak after me, chose the area that we live in mostly because it's in the county or in the country. Aside from traffic, it's a pretty quiet area. We have neighbors, they're not very close to us, and that is something that we value. Life in general is just more quiet and more enjoyable in the country. There are plenty of things that Sanford and Lee County as a whole could benefit from, but an RV park is not one of them. At the March 20th Planning Board meeting, it was revealed that there are many aspects of this RV park that are not enforceable, which leaves community members such as myself and others vulnerable to the unknown that will essentially lie within the confines of the RV park. RV parks in this day, in this day and time, have turned into essentially low-income housing for people that may not be able to afford the astronomical housing market we exist in today. This proposed Swanee Lake RV Park at 4191 Swan Station Road, it will, it will be no different. I do urge you Commissioners to reject this proposal and to quote Lee County Planning Board member Derek Farmer from the February 20th Planning Board meeting. I wouldn't want this in my backyard. So I do leave that with you Commissioners, that my backyard is important too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next individual is John Kirkman on Swan Station Road. Are you two related?
We're trying to figure that out. Not quite sure. Probably so, though, somewhere. Good evening. My name is John Kirkman, 4465 Swan Station Road, Sanford. I spoke before the Commissioners at the previous meeting in my opposition. My opposition to the RV park still is the same. Have many concerns, having attended the public hearing and also the rezoning meeting, that the individual developing this RV park has not adequately addressed the concerns that were presented at that time and, and made opportunity to address those or make changes. It does concern me particularly around the density of the RV park, that you're going to have 80 units in less than 20 acres, and to make sure that the density matches what it needs to be. Of course, they're using the entire property, which includes the lake. I also have a major concern still about the traffic and the traffic concerns that would be created with that. Also, the erosion and sediment issues that have been mentioned, they continue to be a concern. I do not see where there's been any efforts to address any of those things as far as water quality and those types of things that have been previously presented. And then, of course, with the public search of the developer, there were multiple concerns that have arisen, and those concerns were shared with the Commission members as far as other items were entailed, particularly with his federal tax lien. That is very concerning, and also his history of operational procedures and stuff that have been brought before the Commissioners. So I still stand in opposition to this park and, and do not feel it fits the long-range development plan for Lee County that we've discussed earlier, and also the current use for those properties around what he calls Swanee Lake, or we commonly refer to as Morris's Pond. So thank you for your time this afternoon and evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next individual is Kate Woods. Again, please state your name and address.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Kate Woods. I'm a resident of 1145 Deerfoot Trail in the community of Carolina Trace, and I am the president of the Carolina Trace Association. I'm here tonight to represent the concerns of my residents in regards to the environmental impact of the proposed rezoning of the Swanee Lake RV Park. I echo many of the individuals before me with those concerns, so to be brief, I sent those concerns to you via email ahead of time, and I would like those to be added to the record of tonight's meeting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I apologize. I'm not sure if this says Paul Ferris or Paul Ferns. Paul Ferris, thank you, sir. I apologize. My eyes aren't good anymore.
My name is Paul Ferris, 5631 Swan Station Road, relatively new resident and moved there specifically for many of the reasons stated of the rural nature of the, of the area. And we, in fact, have put a horse farm in and are growing the community for horse people and sportsmen and the like. I'm also a mildly successful businessman, and in business, you'll appreciate that there is one guiding tenet, and that is location, location, location. And this is not the location for a successful RV park. This is a rural area. In fact, when I looked at the county plan, the one that I could find online, this was most, most eloquently designated rural preservation land, not an RV park. I clearly wish you to vote against this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next individual is Ed Washburn.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Ed Washburn. My address is 4180 Swan Station Road. Our property is directly across the street from the proposed RV park. And I did speak back in the February meeting, and I'm here again to speak against the RV park. Couple of years ago, after serving 44 years active duty and as a civilian in the Air Force, I retired, and we decided to move, and we chose North Carolina. And there were a lot of areas here in North Carolina we could have chosen, but we chose to come to Lee County. And the reason that we decided to come here is because of the location of the property that we have. We knew that it was an area that was zoned as residential and agricultural. We wanted to be out in the country, away from any businesses, which is where we're at now, and have an area that was peaceful, that had good neighbors, a place where we could do our things outside, like yard work and, and that kind of things, without interruption from, from any businesses. It also gives us a location where it's still close enough to businesses that we can come to in Sanford. Everything that we try to do here, we try to support all local businesses, and I think we've done a pretty good job Earlier, somebody mentioned what the core values say for the county Commissioners of Lee County, and we did go on the, the county's website and read that, and the very, one at the very top list says, "We value our citizens, community, and family." And I think that my wife and I and our neighbors fit that, and our community fit that very good, and that we are a valued part of Lee County. Now, I know you've heard a lot of issues about the RV park, and one of our big issues was that Swan Station Road is a very busy place. And we're just afraid that there may be a lot of wrecks, especially if you have a lot of slow-moving vehicles in that area. I hope you have all had the opportunity to come out and see the proposed area for the RV park. Based on current zoning laws, the RV park just does not fit our community. There has to be other places away from a, a community residential agriculture area that you could build a RV park. And I would just ask that you please consider voting against this RV park. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next individual Kathy Griffith. And again, please state your name as well as your address.
My name is Kathy Griffith. I live at 304 South Main Street in Broadway, and I'm here tonight in my capacity as chair of the library board. Our Lee County library is straining at the seams. The current main branch building struggles to meet the needs of our patrons. The inefficiency of the heating and cooling, coupled with the liabilities of the greenhouse roof structure, makes utility bills unreasonably expensive. The parking accommodations are woefully inadequate. The square footage is insufficient to safely house programming, staff, and collections for a county with our current population, not to mention the burgeoning growth, of which our Commissioners are well aware. A county growing at the pace of ours will only see expanded need for services and space. Therefore, we commend the Lee County Board of Commissioners for approving the construction of a new library. The library board especially appreciates the commitment and foresight of our Commissioners as they boldly address the future of our county. At this point in time, as we face uncertainty and conflicting predictions on our budgets, we urgently ask that the Lee County Board of Commissioners stand firmly behind their visionary commitment to the new library. Budgets and timelines will always be in a state of flux, but we cannot afford to falter or shrink back from what our future requires. We must not reduce the capabilities and capacities of the new library out of timidity. What use is a new building if it repeats the pinches and constraints of the current situation? A wise man said, "Whatever the cost of our libraries, the price is cheap compared to that of an ignorant nation." Therefore, we, the Lee Library Board of Lee County, strongly advise and encourage our Lee County Commissioners to press forward in their promise of support for the well-being of our citizens with a new Lee County library, which will fully address the needs of Lee County's future. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next individual on the list is Virginia Strzynski. Did I get that right? And again, please, please give us your name as well as your address.
I'm Virginia Strzynski. I live at 108 Edgewater Drive in Broadway. I am a retired teacher. I have taught many, many children. I also have taught adults. Our library is very, very important, and we really cannot let the education of our whole population fall behind. We certainly need the new library, and we are so happy that the Board of Commissioners have been in favor of this. The children learn so much, and they need to know that there is a library there that has all that has all the knowledge available for them by many means today, not just books, but other means also. Our working people need to keep up with the times. There are so many new things coming on the market daily. Our intelligence is increasing greatly. And our senior citizens enjoy the many things available at our library. So, the library is there for all our people, not just our children, not just our working people, but also our senior citizens. We urge you to find the money to keep this project underway and bring it to a full support of our population here in Lee County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Next individual on the roster is Kathy Tobias. And again, please state your name as well as your address.
My name is Kathy Tobias, and I live at 3926 Swan Station Road. And I'm here to speak against the RV park, like so many others. And I have to say that I agree with them on all the points that they made. There's no point that I don't agree with. But I wanted to read a little bit about Morris's Pond. Morris's Pond was first dammed up by Elijah and Elizabeth McDougald Morris in 1865. So, to say that it is part of our rural community is an understatement. It would be true to the spirit of rural preservation for us as a county to maintain this location that has been used for dances and weddings and fishing for over 100 years. And to limit that to an RV park would be an injustice. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next individual, Victor Tobias.
My name is Victor Tobias. I also live at 3926 Swan Station Road. And I am in opposition to the proposal of the RV park. My wife and I are in the process of building a farm that we hope that will turn into something of a legacy for generations to come in our family. And the reason we decided on this site was because of the community that was there and in place. We love the agricultural and home sites that are there. And we are just very discouraged by the fact that there's a possibility of the view changing. I think I can speak for all of my community neighbors that we are totally against this proposition. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next individual on the agenda is Vaughn King. And again, please state your name as well as your address, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Vaughn King, 716 New Eland Church Road, New Hill, North Carolina. I didn't know I was running for public office with all the smears that have come at me during this time. And they did say they would do everything possible to stop it. My intention is to do a nice RV park. And it's a shame I have to kind of defend myself. But the developments that I have done and completed, such as, say, the Carely Mills downtown Raleigh by the Farmer's Market. It was a rundown building. We brought it back to life, put 84 condos in it. It's a really nice place. You can drive by there and look. Also, like, for an example, the Hudson Belk downtown Raleigh. That building was falling apart as well. We put 64 condos in that. Channel 11 is there, three restaurants, a UPS store. As far as some of the concerns that they're having, like runoff, we have an environmental company that we take care of. Stormwater ponds, water quality. So, we understand how to take care of these issues. We just want to do a nice campground. We've been working with different organizations for summer camps for kids. Like, we've reached out to the YMCA, which is 15 minutes down the street. They're saying to us, they need things for the kids to do. This is a great place to do it. I don't know what else to say, but we really want to do it. We want to live there as well. So, hopefully, we can get it worked out and hopefully be neighbors with everybody and have peace. That's it.
Thank you, sir. That concludes the public comments. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, old business, the new library project. Who wishes to start?
So, we have before the board an update on the new library project. With us tonight, we have Victor Vines and Jeff Schroeder with Vines Architecture that'll provide a presentation for you on the status of the design. They've also been working with our construction manager at risk, Sam at Sanford Contractors, to put together cost estimates on the project. We also have tonight with us the library director Beth List and the Board of Trustees to listen to this information as well. Staff will be seeking the board's guidance on how to move forward on this project due to the cost estimates that have come in and the current status of the budget. At each of your seats, I've got a copy of the presentation available, because it does have some numbers in there that can get a little bit small. So, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Vines. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you for having us. My name is Victor Vines with Vines Architecture. We are the architects and designers for your new Lee County library. Before we go into any other details, I want to just reiterate how much a pleasure that is to be doing a library for Lee County. We do work all over the country when it comes to library design. And this one is quite special. That said, we're going to give you an update on where we are with the project. I'm going to do a quick summary. And then Jeff is going to go through the presentation in detail so that you understand the status of exactly where we are. We were here in December of 2022 and presented the schematic design of the 33,000, I think, 33,450-square-foot library that we had designed for you. The schematic design phase is essentially the first phase of developing the building and its size relative to its program that has been created for the library for Lee County. What we have done and shown you up until now has that program intact. And so, when we left you in December, the next step was to estimate the project with our construction manager, Sam at Sanford Joint Venture. What we also did is that we estimated the project with a third-party estimator. After that, those estimates came back to us, and we did what we call a reconciliation phase, where the two entities came together to make sure that the statements of probable costs for the library were as accurate as possible, given today's market and its volatility that we're seeing. So, what we're here to do tonight is to talk about the project in terms of what I'd like to refer to as sort of three levers or three control points that we have to work with. One, and not necessarily in any order of importance, is understanding the available funds for the project overall, which is essentially the budget. The second one is the actual quantity or size of a building. That is a lever that can be manipulated when we're looking at trying to do cost management if we find ourselves over budget, which we do currently find ourselves at. And that's something that you're going to see some information on. It's not necessarily a recommendation. It's just understanding that it is a lever that we can work with if, in fact, we're directed to. And then the third one is essentially the quality of the building, the cost per square foot, if you can think of it that way. We are careful how much we manipulate that, because, as you can imagine, the lower or the cheaper something is, you have issues long-term with your facility lasting the life that it needs to last for a library. If you think about doing a shopping center or something, you would manipulate that one a little bit more, because those projects only have a certain lifespan, because they'll be remodeled or torn down and rebuilt over time. Libraries are not like that. They're built and redesigned them for a certain lifespan. And we're not talking about 10 or 15 years. We're talking about 20, 30 years for these types of buildings. So, we just need to be mindful about how much we manipulate that. You're going to hear Jeff talk about value engineering. The value engineering is that part where we can begin to manipulate the cost per square foot on the building to a certain degree. We recommend not doing that more than probably 8% to 10%, because if you go beyond that, you start doing things to the building that you're not going to be happy with in the long run. So, we want to just give you that update, where we are, how these things can happen. There is no recommendation here on which one we believe you should go with. That is for you to consider and then give us guidance on. And then we can answer any questions regarding the manipulation of any of these two or three, for that matter, regarding the budget, once we go through the presentation. Okay?
Jeff?
See if I can work this. Great. So, as we get into this, as Victor mentioned, we've been working on the project for a little bit, under a year, I believe, at this point. And in December of 2022, we were in front of you and presented the project approach that we had worked on with the library, the community, and the leadership of Lee County. At that point, we presented the approach to the site, which was really about kind of creating this as a hub and a catalyst for the park that it's situated in, and also helping to generate activity and support the large events and programs that the library is actively engaged in. And it just draws great numbers of people to the community. And as Victor mentioned, the floor plan was about 33,300, 33,450. That held all the program elements that we talked about with the library, that we heard from the community. It included the county commissioners' meeting room as part of this and the large program space. And also created dedicated spaces for the teens, which is an important demographic to reach. And spaces for children have dedicated space as well. At that meeting, we also showed three potential design approaches that we were looking at. And after that meeting, it was agreed upon that Approach C would be the way that we would move forward based on its ability to provide a presence from the street, from Bragg Street along the edge. With the credit union along that street, it gave us presence from behind that. And it also recollected, gave recollection to the agricultural and the sort of agrarian community that exists in Lee County. And we thought it was very important to maintain that character of the building to respond to that. And then, from January until February, we were really working with Sam at Sanford, the team internally going through the building, our third-party cost estimator, to just make sure that we understood where the building was currently, what the probable cost would be expected to be. And so, from that, it's really touching, I apologize. From that, in their numbers, they came up with a total estimated construction cost of right around $18 million, 786,015. And in breaking that down, the building cost was about $14 million. Contingencies, which we always carry at the early stage to allow for the unknowns that'll happen as we get into the project further, was about $3 million. And then insurance, bonds, other fees associated with the project were about $1.3 million. And so, in working with the leadership of the county and understanding the budget that they had allocated for the project, they gave us a number of $13 million was what they were targeting for the construction cost on there, which put us approximately $5.7 million over the budget that was allocated based on their construction budget for the project. And that represented a 33,450-square-foot building. The first thing that we did as a design team was beginning to look at opportunities to value engineer the project. Where could we take pieces out of the building that would save money potentially? Maybe things that could be added later, but also begin to get some of the costs down. So, from a site standpoint, starting there, we looked at opportunities to reduce some of the outdoor plazas and outdoor spaces for the building, looking at reducing the parking down to a code minimum, which would be 56 spaces, and really trying to rely on partnerships with the adjacent properties. And then, looking at just trying to reduce the site planting overall to just try and get that number down a little bit. From the interior of the building, we looked at trying to reduce some of the materials and some of the finishes in there. From a material standpoint, it's a lot of carpet, a little bit of wood we had in some of the major feature areas, like the stage and a couple of small spaces. But a lot of it is carpet and vinyl tile. And then, we looked at also trying to reduce some of the interior storefront, which would decrease the visibility. But again, it's opportunity to get some cost out of the project. And then, we also looked at trying to reduce the drive-through canopy to a bare minimum size for that as well, to still provide covering, but not provide a full extensive covering as we had initially thought. And then, on the exterior, these are probably where the biggest adjustments that we targeted occurred. The original design was basically 1/3 masonry, 1/3 metal panel, and 1/3 glass. And so, we looked at adjusting those targets to be 60% masonry, 15% metal, and cutting the glass from 38% to 25%, which, again, decreases the daylight in, but it does offer some cost savings there as well. The other big adjustment that we looked at from a cost standpoint is to convert from the undulating sloped metal roof that we had in the initial design that was approved and going back to the flat roof on the building as well. From working with our cost estimating team and with Sam at Sanford, the thought is that's about a $600,000 savings to go from the sloped roof to the flat roof, although it does have drawbacks in losing the present significantly from Bragg Street. And so, with looking at all that, the VE approaches that we did, we were able to target a savings of about $1.278 million, which takes our overage from $5.786 to $4.5 million over budget as well. So, that's kind of where we got to with that first pass. And as Victor mentioned, typically, we feel like we can get 8% to 10% out of there, and we're right in line with that approach on this project. The next step that we looked at doing was, you know, knowing that we were trying to reach that $13 million, if we had to hold that as our construction cost, was really the only other way to get there would be to pull square footage out of the building and decrease the size. And so, we looked at three areas. And these aren't designed to look at program within them. They're just spaces within the building. So, we had Zone A to the south, Zone B to the east, and then Zone C to the north. As potential areas that could be pulled out of the building to reduce the square footage. The other thing that we looked at as part of the exercise is to run numbers for the cost of the county commissioners' chambers and the associated space to support that versus the funds that were added to the project initially and what the current market value is to create that space. And from there, again, their thought, based on doing that estimate, was that the amount that was added initially wasn't enough to cover that extra space that was added to the building. And so, we were actually, that was kind of hurting the project a little bit, but also acknowledging that it was a very important part of the project to include. And so as we kind of look at our summary slide here, so where we started was the $33,450 square foot, which was at the $18.7 million. The VE savings, which took us, which kept us at the $33,450 square feet, but allowed savings of $1.27 million there. And then looking at taking the square footage of about 6,800 square feet, which took us, which added additional savings of about $2.9 million onto the project. And then a third square footage reduction of about 2,000 square feet, which got about another $1 million out of the project. And then the other thing that we had at the very end is based upon the difference of what was added to the project initially of the $2 million to cover the council chambers. The number that Sam and Sanford felt that really represented was about $2.6 million. So we have in there an additional add of $600,000. And so with all that, what it leaves us with is a building that's about 24,476 square feet. And that brings us to 12 point, well, just under $13 million, which puts us in budget based on the current numbers and the funding that's been allocated for the project. And then what that leaves us with is a library that's about 19,000 square feet and the council, large meeting space and supporting spaces for that, which is about 5,500 square feet. And so then the last thing that, you know, just as considerations as we go through and think about reductions in the building, additional funding, what the opportunities, what those next steps might be and what those levers might be, as Victor talked about, you know, if we take all of the VE items, it results in that 20, just under 25,000 square foot building. The flat roof would decrease the visible presence from Bragg Street and the surrounding areas. We decreased the exterior glass. Again, these are all savings opportunities, so there's benefits there, but there's also challenges to align. The council chambers and the associated program spaces remain at the 5,500 square feet. The dedicated library space is about 19,000 square feet. In comparison with the existing library, as our understanding is, about 18,000 square feet. So it represents a very modest increase in square footage. And then, you know, just questions to think about is, will the new library adequately serve the existing residents of Lee County? And then will it also support the rapid growth of Lee County and the region as we go forward? So with that, I thank you very much for the time.
Okay, Mr. Schroeder, thank you. Questions, council? We are a commission, so we need to change that to commission chambers. Commissioner Sharp, do you have any questions, sir?
I don't have any questions, but I got some comments. I was going to ask the question of our current library, but I saw it in a presentation that was 18,000. And we're, for our money, we're just proposing to get a few square feet above that. And that just don't sit well with me. And I kind of feel the same way as I do about sports complex. I don't want to half-do either one of them. This building will be a centerpiece of our community. I've been around here 59 years and I remember the Lee County Library down on Steel Street, then the new library over on Hawkins Avenue. This will probably be the last one I see, so I want it to be a good one. I'll just leave it at that for now.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Reeves?
What would it cost us to stay on track with what we already proposed?
That would be a question for the manager.
Based on the numbers that they've shown us, you're looking at being about, you would need to put about almost $6 million more into the project, roughly $5.8 million into it to do the whole project without any of the adjustments that they proposed tonight.
Okay, if we decided to move in that direction...
What's the impact?
Pardon?
What is the impact?
Yes.
I asked Davenport, our financial advisors, to run the numbers at $5 million more going to the project, and there would be no tax impact. And based on a $6 million number, I would say, based on this analysis, that there would still be no tax impact, that we could pick up another $6 million for this project, $5 to $6 million for this project with no tax impact.
That's the direction I'll go in and offer a motion if you want one.
Can we wait till everybody gives a question?
Absolutely.
Okay.
My only question was going to be the converting the flat roof or the Option C to the flat roof. Is there any structural integrity upkeep, like longevity of a, from a flat roof versus Option C?
I don't believe there are any structural changes, but there is a maintenance difference between the sloped metal roof and the flat membrane roof. Not structurally, but just the maintenance of the roof would be very different.
Okay. Our maintenance staff would prefer the angled roof?
Well, that's what, and you're saying, I'm assuming Option C is...
Option C is the angle slope roof.
Yeah, no, no, no. I know, but that's the one that required, which is better, right?
That's better, yes.
Yes, okay. That's what I'm seeing as well, so that's what, okay.
That's correct.
Well, because it's going back to your point on if you're cutting certain costs and it messes with the longevity of the space, then...
That is a perfect example of it.
Yeah, okay. Well, that was kind of what I thought. All right, thank you. That's it.
Commissioner Connect?
Now, chances as you start going out the budget, these numbers can change on you, right?
We would do an estimate at each...
Phase?
Previous phase, the next phase being the design development.
There's a good chance these numbers can also go down.
They could, very well.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
With the options left in, say, with more glass and things like that, is that helping the heating, the cooling? What would you say that would be any difference of the lower cost that we've been talking about?
Well, right now...
Does the glass help or does it hurt?
Well, right now, the current design, which we left you with, which has, what we were saying, 25% more glazing?
The current design has 38%.
Okay.
The new one will have 25%.
Okay, so difference between 25 and 38, what is that, 13? That amount, regardless of the percentages, the glazing on the project is a low E, energy-efficient glazing on the building. So I don't think there's going to be any impact regarding the actual energy cost, but what's going to be a trade-off are views and daylighting coming into the building if we were to go to the reduced glass.
So it could affect lighting?
Yes.
Things like that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Carver?
Yeah, I would like to talk as the liaison to the board. I've had the privilege of working with Beth and these folks that on a regular basis attend those meetings. And I know they've done a lot of due diligence to propose a project that's going to make a difference to Lee County. And specifically, if you think about the Mr. Vine's presentation, he said originally the size was developed in relation to its program. And what the library started with was an idea that we want to offer more to the community. If you think about the competition that happens with young people to keep them invested in an academic or a cerebral issue of coming to a library as opposed to working with electronics or something else, we need a space that really wows them. They need to want to come. And one of the things the library board worked really hard on was to try to reserve the kind of space that's going to make a difference to teenagers and to young children. We can't do that in 19,000 square feet. We're going to be hurt in terms of the concept, the programs that they have in mind. And that's the most significant aspect of the square feet. And if you notice, the other aspects, the VE aspects, really don't save us that much more money. We need those square feet in order to be able to do the programs. The other thing is that when you look at this, we're not gilding the lily. We started out at $18 million and we know what's happened to the market. It's gone up. If you look at the spec buildings we're building, we're up 25%. That's just a reality. So when we're thinking about the fact that we want to have something that as Cameron Sharp is talking about, something that maybe he can be buried someday and still be proud of, we're looking at this kind of a building. And I appreciate the comments that you all are making. And I sense that we realize that just like the arguments associated with the, with the sports complex, we want this one to be special. And coming up with the extra money, I think, my recommendation would be the way we would go. Thank you.
Could I have the library board please stand? If any of you would like to come forward and speak, please feel free. We're good, okay? You had your president, she spoke earlier, thank you. Ms. List, Beth? Your input, please? That was easy. Any other questions for Beth? Oh, well, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, for being on the library board. Commissioner Reeves, do I understand your motion is to keep the plan in place and authorize the financing of $6 million additional dollars?
Total agreement, yes.
The motion's been made to keep the plan in place and authorize the increase of $6 million for financing. Any further questions? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
That means we keep the wood, the glass, and the space.
That's correct.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the planning board recommendation for rezoning request of Swan Station Road. And Amy is here, thank you.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. Prior to proceeding with the consideration of the planning board recommendation for this item, the commissioners should acknowledge for the record whether or not anyone has a conflict of interest regarding this rezoning request.
Does anybody have a conflict of interest with this rezoning request? Planning board, sir?
Oh, no, this is, no, it's on the next to, I'm sorry.
Okay. It's okay. We have no conflicts of interest.
Very well. The information is on pages 37 through 49 of your agenda packet and an 11 by 17 copy of the images of the plans been placed at each seat for your reference. Regarding the application by Michael Blakely of Drafting and Design Services to rezone three adjoining tracts of land comprising 57.17 acres located at 4191, Swan Station Road, from residential agricultural to the Swanee Lake RV Resort conditional zoning district, the planning board met on February 20th after the public hearing was held and tabled this item after the board's discussion produced additional items to be addressed by staff to provide adequate information for the board's decision. The board took the item from the table on March 20th and with additional information provided, voted by a four to three vote to recommend that the Board of Commissioners conditionally approve the proposed zoning map amendment with the following conditions. A maximum of 26 RV sites may serve as non-seasonal vacation dwellings for visitors at any time. With the remainder of the marked RV sites, 54 minimum, serving as short-term seasonal rentals of a maximum period of 180 days per a 12-month period. All RVs shall have an OEM or original equipment manufacturer fuel and propane tanks, and no external tanks shall be permitted. In making this decision, the board discussed the concerns expressed by the neighboring residents during the public hearing, including traffic counts and road access, enforceability of rules presented during the neighborhood meeting, water quality and swimming within the pond on site, the density of the site and regulatory language surrounding dwelling units, and the length of stay for visitors of the RV site. With these concerns in mind, the board added the above conditions to maintain the campground and recreational nature of the proposed project, in turn protecting the neighboring residents and bringing the project into compliance with the Plan San Lee. The board found the proposed rezoning to be consistent with the Plan San Lee designation of countryside due to the preservation of natural landscapes, promotion of agritourism, and adherence to density. As a reminder, the commissioners should make two votes regarding this matter. Sample motions are provided for your reference, and the board is always welcome to draft a unique motion if preferred. Also, the board may acknowledge that this rezoning request is not consistent with the Plan San Lee long-range plan and still vote to approve the rezoning request. This concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Questions for Amy, please. Commissioner Carver?
No questions.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Vorbik?
Can I make a motion now or do we have to...
Well, it'd be nice if we could go around and then come back to you. Commissioner Reeves, questions?
I have one regarding a comment I heard made during the public speaking. Said that in order to do the 80 slots, that a portion of the pond was included to make it work.
I believe what they're referring to is overall density. When staff calculates overall density, they look at the total acreage and they don't subtract out anything that's included in the pond. And I believe this is what the planning board looked at when looking at density.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Sharp? I do have a question, and Amy, I apologize, I was reading while you were speaking. Did you have a total vote on the board of the planning board's vote?
Yes, sir, it was a four to three vote to recommend approval.
Okay. And just for the information of the board, this was handed to me prior to the meeting. And we have 43, excuse me, 70 additional signatures on here. And we had another petition with about 40 signatures on it. So well over 100 constituents that oppose the re-conditional zoning of proposed Swan RV Resort. Your motion, ma'am?
For vote number one, I do make a motion that the proposed zoning map amendment is not consistent with Plan San Lee long-range plan designation of countryside because it could potentially host a higher density of dwelling units and the countryside land use desires. I also would like to add the potential environmental issues. I know they were addressed, however, I think in getting in there, it's going to propose a lot more environmental issues. And I also caution on the throwing it into an agritourism definition. A lot of the research that I did do on it, RV resorts were not in there. It was strictly more on, UNC actually had a really good, their local government law had a really good moment, or really good article on it. And one of the first questions in defining agritourism says, "Does the activity allow members of the general public to view or enjoy activities that are necessarily rural in nature, such as farming, ranching, historic, cultural, harvest-your-own activities, hunting, fishing, equestrian activities, or natural activities and attractions?" RV park, the general public's not going to be able to come on. And I just feel that this is not consistent with what we would like to have with Lee County.
So you're modifying the motion to include...
To a lot, sorry.
Environmentalism and it does not conform to agritourism?
Yes, sir.
Did you get that, Madam Clerk? The motion's been made, motion number two, which has been modified. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to the next motion?
I'd also like to make a motion for Option Two. Make a motion that the planning board recommend the Board of Commissioners deny the proposed zoning map amendment because the site is not appropriate for the land uses proposed by the applicant.
Any further discussion?
I would like to mention, because when issues like this come before this council, I take it to heart. I listen... I listen to each and every one of you. If you ever want to call, call me. I'll listen to you. I listened to Mr. King also, and I told him I would do my due diligence, not just because you're a number and he's one. I would do my due diligence. This gentleman's done some great projects, very great projects. Beautiful down at Barefoot Landing. With that in mind, I had to look at Marshes Pond, and I went down there today. That's what I do, as one of your commissioners. I look and research things. And I'd been down there several years fishing and stuff, but I also did other homework on this to where the pond is also used for agricultural irrigation. And I've talked with several people around, and the pond, in dry conditions with irrigation going on, is sometimes dropped down so low that you could walk across it. Also, in boating, I know Mr. King talked... No motorized boating. I could talk to the neighbor, as long as he didn't put a fence across it, I could put a boat in, and as long as I don't anchor, I can still get in that lake with a motorized boat. As far as swimming, looking at it today, Mr. King, I don't know if you could or if anybody else could make... Would those snakes would get out of that place? I mean, but, and also looked at the traffic situation. I sit there and watch, and I could imagine myself being in a dually vehicle with a 35-foot camper trying to get out of those driveways. So with that in mind, I'm not taking this vote lightly in anything that I do for each and every one of you. Always try to consider it, and I think each of several other ones have went by and looked at the site, and that's what we'd like to do as your commissioners. So I just wanted to keep that in mind when you hear these votes, so, thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Amy. Next item on the agenda is the UDO text amendment for mobile food...
Can you explain what we just did to the public?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just think we ought to explain what we just did to the... On the vote.
We had two motions. One was to confirm that it did not meet... Hold on, I have it here. It did not... It was not consistent with Plan San Lee. And then on the second motion, we denied the request to rezone the area. Next item on the agenda is "You're More Than Welcome to Stay." Next item on the agenda is the UDO text amendment for mobile food vending unit standards.
Good evening again. Prior to proceeding with consideration of this planning board recommendation, which is the UDO text amendment for mobile food vendor, the commissioners should acknowledge for the record whether or not anyone has a conflict of interest regarding this text amendment.
I do believe we have two individuals that we need to make a motion to excuse from voting.
And can we make a motion for them to be excused for both C and D?
Correct.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion? Motion's been made to excuse Commissioner Lovick and Commissioner Sharp from the two items, item number 4C and 4D. Any further discussion? For those who are not familiar with the fact that Mr. Lovick has a vending vehicle, and Mr. Sharp has a... With the planning commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Are you on the... I'm sorry. You're on the city board. I'll get his title down. Okay. We're kicking him out. They're gone.
Yes, sir. This information is on pages 50 through 58 of your agenda packet. And let me start by explaining how we got to where we are today with this text amendment. Community development staff drafted a text amendment in response to the increasing number of mobile food vendors, commonly known as food trucks, operating in Sanford-Broadway and Lee County. The new land use mobile food vendor and its associated supplemental standards would allow greater flexibility for staff in issuing permits for food trucks, a more practical administration of the food truck's use and operation throughout the community, and increased public safety by facilitating more coordination with the Lee County and other counties' health department. At this time, we include mobile food vendors or food trucks within our general temporary uses category, which requires them to secure a temporary use permit, and it only allows them to operate up to 10 consecutive days at one location, with a minimum of a 30-day separation between events and a maximum of six times a year. The scheduling requirement is cumbersome and difficult for vendors to adhere to, and does not allow for mobile food vendors to frequent the same location often, even though this may be a popular spot for them. In response to the increasing popularity of mobile food vendors and concerns expressed by vendors and elected officials that they should be treated differently from other temporary uses, staff created this text amendment. Staff presented this text amendment to the Joint Planning Commission, and they were supportive of this amendment moving forward. The city of Sanford adopted this ordinance as originally proposed on November 1st, 2022. The town of Broadway adopted the ordinance as originally proposed on December 19th, 2022. The proposed text amendment includes land use standards specifically for mobile food vendors. These standards include the permitted locations of use, the location of food vendors within a particular site, so as to avoid obstructing traffic and emergency vehicles, and the safe preparation handling of food, and the handling and disposal of resultant waste. In conjunction with these land use standards, a draft copy of the mobile food vendor application has been prepared for review. This application can be used to collect the food truck operator's information, to ensure staff administers permits fairly and accurately, and to provide information to permit applicants about the mobile food unit and health department standards. The Lee County met on March 20th, and... I'm sorry, the Lee County Planning Board met on March 20th, and recommended by a six-to-one vote that the Lee County Board of Commissioners approve the proposed UDO text amendment with the revisions noted. The one dissenting vote was cast by a planning board member who expressed concern regarding allowing mobile food vendors to set up on undeveloped lots. I have referenced... I've included the mobile food vendor application with this recommendation, with the changes in red, and we can go through those individually if you prefer. And as a reminder, once again, you will need to make two votes regarding this proposed text amendment. Would you like to go through the mobile food permit application with the amended language?
Please.
Okay. All right. So on page one of the application, we have updated it, so in the upper right-hand corner, there is no fee associated with this permit if you're in the jurisdiction of Lee County, as opposed to the $50 fee that was implemented by the city of Sanford. Does everyone have this in front of them?
Does that include the town of Broadway as well?
The town of Broadway has not considered this item yet. Oh, I'm terribly sorry. They have considered this item, and they do have the $50 fee.
Okay.
All right. I updated our address to include Suite 1, because that can be an issue sometimes. Then flipping over to page two of the mobile food vendor application at the top, "Mobile food vendor standards for Lee County" was added, because this would be specifically for you. In 5.45.1, "Mobile food vendor," upper-left corner, this definition was added. "Mobile food vendors shall include vendors of food, drink, or other consumable products, which may operate as a food truck, food trailer, food cart, or other similar or temporary vehicle." We struck through the language that said, "Mobile food vendors shall be permitted as an accessory use and shall be subject to additional requirements." In the city and in Broadway, they're permitted only as an accessory use, which means they can only park in a parking lot of an existing business, whereas in Lee County, there was concern expressed by the commissioners, and the planning board agreed, that this food truck should be allowed on a vacant lot. Now, in 5.45.2, "locations," we did add language in there. It reads now, "to allow..." Let me just step back and read the entire thing, and I'll tell you what changed. "Mobile food vendors shall be permitted to operate in any commercially or industrially zoned areas." Staff added the language, "whether undeveloped..." "whether developed or undeveloped," and then it goes back to, "so long as they obtain the property owner's permission." So in Lee County, whether the land is developed or undeveloped, this land use is proposed to be allowed. In 5.45.2.2, "Mobile food vendors shall be permitted to operate in public parks, but must first shall be verified and receive permission from the appropriate jurisdiction, parks administrator, or equivalent staff member." This language stayed the same as originally presented. 5.45.2.3, "Mobile food vendors may also operate in residentially zoned areas, but only within areas designated as common open space, and having a community-oriented use, and owned by a property management group, a homeowner's association, or other responsible organization, and with that organization's permission." That is the original language that has not been changed. In section 5.45.2.4, "Operation of mobile food vendors on individual residentially zoned lots, whether developed with dwellings or not, shall be prohibited." Once again, this language stayed the same. We struck through 5.45.2.5...
Can I just clarify something real quick? That only means on a continual basis you can't work out of a residential...
Yes, sir. It's a permanent location.
Permanent, that's right. Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir. So, 5.45.2.5, we struck through, "Mobile food vendors are prohibited from operating on undeveloped and vacant land for which a principal use has not been established regardless of the zoning district. Mobile food vendors shall be considered as an accessory to an existing principal land use, for example, a structure, a place of business, a park, or recreation area." Once again, we struck through this language, because it appears the county feels strongly about allowing this land use on vacant and undeveloped land. Moving on to 5.45.3 standards. 5.45.3.1, "A mobile food vendor permit issued by the Department of Community Development is required for the operation of any mobile food vendor within the county of Lee." We struck through Sanford and Broadway, because they have already adopted the original language. "The approved permit must be posted in public view while operating within the aforementioned jurisdictions." I struck through "within the aforementioned jurisdictions" because this is only applicable to Lee County. 5.45.3.2 remain the same. "The mobile food vendor permit shall be valid for one full calendar year from the date of issuance. Mobile food vendors shall renew their permit annually with the Department of Community Development." Moving on to 5.45.3.3, "Only one mobile food vendor shall be permitted to operate on a particular parcel at any one time unless operating with a temporary use permit. Multiple mobile food vendors shall also be permitted on a parcel as part of an official event sanctioned by the county of Lee." We struck through the references to the other two jurisdictions. 5.45.3.4, "Mobile food vendors shall be located at least 15 feet away from any fire hydrant, shall not impede or interfere with pedestrian or vehicular traffic flow, shall not occupy any ADA handicap accessible parking spaces, nor obstruct ingress/egress of a building as set forth in all applicable North Carolina state codes and state building codes and fire codes." We added the language, "shall not be located at least 15 feet from any fire hydrant, and shall not occupy any ADA accessible parking spaces," to this paragraph, and we removed that as being two separate individual line items in order to convince the... Condense the language. So it didn't have as many items. Once again, 5.45.3.5, we simply removed this language, added it to the prior paragraph. 5.45.3.6, we struck through this language, because we added that language to the prior paragraph, which is 3.4. 5.45.3.7, "Mobile food vendors are limited to daily hours of operation between 6:00 a.m. and midnight." We struck through this language, because several commissioners expressed concern about this, and the planning board agreed that we would let the market dictate those hours. 5.45.3.8, "Adequate solid waste receptibles for customers' use must be provided. Mobile food vendors are responsible for the removal and disposal of trash as a result of their operation." This language is intact and as originally proposed. Also, 5.45.3.9, "No liquid waste or grease shall be disposed of onto sidewalk streets or other public spaces..." "Grease shall not be released into public sewers or stormwater drains. All waste must be properly disposed of in approved containers and locations." This language is originally intact and has not changed. Does this language, as amended, address your concerns?
Any questions? Commissioner Reeves?
No.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
No, sir.
Commissioner Connect?
I have concerns.
Okay.
And there's another page, Ms. McNeil.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry to interrupt, but...
Oh, yes, yes.
5.45.3.10.
That's true. There is another page. I apologize. It's stuck together.
So sorry.
Shall we continue?
Please, we need to capture that.
Okay, all right. Very well.
Thank you.
Let's move on to 5.45.3.10. "Any signage associated with the operation of a mobile food vendor must comply with sign regulations found in Article 11 of this ordinance." A commissioner expressed that this was... That this information should be included within this permit, so the information will be readily available to the mobile food vendors. So, we removed that sentence and updated 5.45.3.10. "Any signage associated with the operation of a mobile food vendor must be temporary on premise on-site during the duration of the operation of the associated mobile food vendor only, and may not be illuminated. One sign is allowed per street frontage not to exceed 32 square feet. Temporary signs shall not be required to obtain a sign permit. The owner of the property where the temporary sign is located is deemed to have authorized the sign and is empowered to remove any temporary sign that is on the property without authorization." This language was added so that the mobile food vendor would know what the sign regulations are at the time of applying for the permit, and not have to reference a different section of the local zoning ordinance. Moving on to 5.45.3.11, which is the original language. "If applicable, mobile food vendors must obtain a valid food establishment permit from any North Carolina county to operate. Upon receiving their first sanitation grade, their current sanitation grade must be displayed in public view at all times, and supporting information from any North Carolina county must be in good standing and made available upon request." 5.45.3.12, once again, this is the original language. "Mobile food vendors must have an independent electrical source, generator, etc., to support equipment containing hot or cold food, and to maintain hot water for proper food handling and sanitation." 5.45.3.13, once again, the original language. "The suspension, expiration, or revocation of approvals and permits associated with any North Carolina county's environmental health department will render the mobile food vendor permit void." 5.45.3.14, our final section, with the original language. "Mobile food vendors must comply with all applicable environmental health regulations set forth by the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, specifically 15A, NCAC 18A, .27... I'm sorry, .2670 of NCDHSS's Rules Governing the Food Protection and Sanitation of Food Establishments." Now...
Now, Commissioner Connect?
Yes, sir?
All right. I think you guys did a great job by making the changes and putting them all together, making it a little bit more smooth. My only objection is to the actual need and necessity of a permit. Reason being is, I can only imagine a food truck having to go to every single city in this state and requiring a food permit for a year. I can only imagine the headache that would become. I surely don't want to be the one starting it here. I wish the city would think about that as well. Every food vendor has to notify the local health department that they're present in the county when they're working, and that information can always be passed on to anybody. You know, if you guys want to know that information in the city, I don't have a problem with that. I think that's my only concern I have left. And then, obviously, within the... With the UDO, just taking out the language accordingly, that talks about the permit, which is 5.45.3.1, .2, and then .9, which just, you know, talks about requiring the permit and needing a permit. Those are my... That's my only concern that I have left. Thank you.
So are you comfortable with the use being allowed, but no permit... The use being allowed with these supplemental standards... The use being allowed with these supplemental standards, but no permit being required?
Correct. Thank you.
Would you like to put that into a motion, sir?
I would, I mean, I'll even make the motion, I'll make the motion, motion one, with those changes, that it conforms with the UDO, with those changes, not requiring a permit, and just removing the particular language that discusses the permit.
All right, the motion's been made. The Board of Commissioners approve the proposed UDO text amendments because the proposed text amendment appears to be reasonable and in the public interest since it will help regulate mobile food vendors and better enforce regulations related to public health and food safety with the added no permit requirement striking through the permit requirement in 5.45, 5.45.3.1, and 5.45.3.2.
And.
Give that, Madam Clerk.
And .9.
Thank you.
Okay. And, I'm sorry?
5.45.3.9, which is just.
5.45.3.9. Any further discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Carver, I left you out.
No, I'm happy, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The five votes have it.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the UDO.
And for the record, I believe Commissioner Connect made the vote to approve it, so I think now it's just the consistency statement, so it's technically vote one. Is that right?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. We just did it backwards, that's okay.
Okay, so we need to make a statement that motion one is, is it consistent with the UDO? Do I have a motion?
Oh.
We jumped, we jumped, I jumped ahead, I'm apologizing.
Okay, so vote one, yes, so I make a motion that proposed UDO text amendment is consistent with the plan, Sandley Long Range Plan, because the proposed text amendment more accurately reflects the commercial uses envisioned in the plan.
You've heard the motion, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy, and the planning board.
You guys did a great job.
For listening to us.
All right, the next item on the agenda is, should we take a break? Would. No, we have, we have a desire to take a break, so. We're going to take a break. I'm going to set my timer for five minutes. Five minutes, ladies and gentlemen, we are in break, recess. If we can come back to order, please. Thank you. I need to, I appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is the UDO text amendment for food truck park.
All right.
Amy McNeil is back.
Yes, my final item this evening. Once again, prior to proceeding with consideration of the planning board recommendation for a UDO text amendment regarding food truck park, the commissioners should acknowledge for the record whether or not anyone has a conflict of interest regarding this text amendment.
We've already taken that motion and moved them out.
Yes, I apologize.
That's fine.
Okay.
That is appropriate.
This information is on pages 59 through 66 of your agenda packet. Once again, let me start by explaining how we got to where we are today with this text amendment. May I pause for one moment to get my pen?
Yes.
Just in case I need it. So due to the increased popularity of mobile food vendors or food trucks, trailers, and carts, staff has received several inquiries regarding the creation of a food truck park at various locations within our jurisdictions. This would be a permanent location that people would frequent to dine from various mobile food vendors that are on site. The mobile food vendors would move in and out of this location, but the site, with all of the required site improvements, such as parking, permanent restroom facilities, recycling, refuse areas, et cetera, would remain at the fixed location. The food truck park would be owned and operated as a private business with regular hours and days of operation, and there could be several at different locations zoned general commercial C2 and highway commercial HC around our area depending on demand. Staff has had several phone calls from interested parties and has actually met with someone on site who expressed interest in developing a food truck park on a lot located in the southeastern corner of Wicker Street and Horner Boulevard. This land was not, this land use was not listed in the UDO as an allowed use. However, since mobile food vendors are so popular, staff researched this land use and presented a proposed text amendment to the Joint Planning Commission, who were supportive of the amendment moving forward for consideration by each jurisdiction. The city of Sanford adopted the text amendment with the original language on March 7th of 2023. Staff will present this text amendment to Broadway in May. The Lee County Planning Board met on March 20th after the public hearing was held and recommended by unanimous vote that the Lee County Board of Commissioners approve the proposed UDO text amendment with the revisions noted. And the language in red, and I hope all of you have a color version, the language in red has been revised by staff as noted to reflect the concerns of the commissioners expressed during their public hearing process and the concerns of the planning board expressed during their deliberation regarding a recommendation. And I will be glad to read through the design standards individually or allow you to review them yourselves and make myself available for questions.
We'll make yourself available for questions. Do we have any questions regarding any of the changes? Commissioner Reeves?
None.
Commissioner Warbeck?
Um, I just had two questions. One was, and maybe I'm going a little too much. So on number three, the spaces designated for mobile food vendors shall, oh, just kidding, wrong one. When it's the, talking about the designated spaces, okay, number nine, a minimum of three parking spaces per mobile food vendor shall be provided. Is there a way to clarify that, that that is for, this is going to sound redundant, for parking and not the, not meaning the, that the three parking spaces are not for the food vendor to fit in? Is that making sense?
A minimum of three parking spaces for customers of mobile food vendors shall be provided.
Okay. And then.
Is that a standard, is that a city standard anyway? Is there, isn't there a number for businesses to have? Is there?
Yes, sir, it depends on the type of business. The most common is based on square footage, one per 300 square feet of gross floor area. That's for most retail and service-oriented uses. When you get to restaurants and things like that, then it's based on the seating, one per three seats.
Got, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And then my only other question, and it may not pertain to this, but I saw the staff note where the planning board was comfortable with offering all of the items listed above as part of the food truck park with the exception of the vendor space for retail goods, wares, merchandise. So if someone had a mobile clothing, is there a UDO or something? That's completely separate.
It's completely separate, that's considered a temporary use. They would get a temporary use permit where they would be required to move around to different locations.
Okay. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Commissioner Connect?
So the staff was okay with recommending, just to clarify, as I saw you did it here, I think that was good, spaces designated for, right? So it puts the onus back on the food truck park operator.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Or after we vote and our recommendations, does this go back to the city to take a look?
No, sir, the city adopted it with the original language.
Well, they can change their minds, can't they?
They can, and we'll be glad to offer that for their consideration.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carver?
No comment.
Do I have a?
I'll make a motion. Get to the motion page here.
Yeah, vote number one.
Motion number one, the UDO is consistent with the Sandley Long Range Plan.
Okay, the motion, option number one, is I make the motion to, Commissioner Connect made the motion to propose the proposed UDO.
With the change of the language about customer spaces, right?
Yes, sir, with the amended language.
With the amended language, any further discussion? Seeing there are none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five to zero.
I'll make a, second motion is move to approve.
And the second, I'm sorry, say again, please.
Motion one, move to approve?
Motion one on option, on vote number two, is that the Board of Commissioners approve the proposed UDO text amendment because the proposed text amendment appears to be reasonable and in the public interest since it creates a new business opportunity for property owners with development standards to protect other businesses and property owners in the area. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Madam Clerk, we have a vote five, four, zero, opposed. Okay, do we need to vote these two individuals back in, onto the board, or we just kicked them out of here?
I'm sorry, oh, yeah, no, they're fine, you can just move on.
Okay, we're moving on with the two additional commissioners, thank you. Next item on the agenda is results from the 2023 employee survey. This is going to be, Ben is the man. All right. Haven't yet had a chance to look at it.
That's what we're here for tonight. Right, good evening, commissioners. I'm really happy to bring to you tonight our employee survey results. We conducted this survey on two weeks in the middle of January, and we've held off on bringing you these until it's a little bit closer to when we'll have the pay study results so that you can have both to consider as you move forward. But starting off, this is a word art of a question that our employees were asked about, what do they enjoy most about working for Lee County? And as you can see here, the biggest things that came up, they love the people, they love the work they do, they love the community, and they love their work environment. Lee County government is an excellent place to work. That is shown throughout the survey, and I hope as we move forward, you'll see some of that. All right, we had an 80.9% total response rate across all departments, it was very solid. Administration was really excellent and had three more responses than was actually in the department, but I think that's because it was first on the list and probably was accidentally selected. So, um, some simple demographics, you can see here, our workforce is 88% white, 9% black or African-American, 2% American Indian or Alaskan Native, and 1% another race. Age ranges fairly distributed. You can see that it's 45%, 45 to 64, which is not a good or a bad thing, but it does say that we do have a population that a good portion could be reaching retirement age in the not-too-distant future. So we have to continue to commit to attracting young professionals to come work for Lee County. Spoken languages, we have 15% of our workforce that work, that speaks Spanish, and then 3% that speaks another language. That's very important to be able to serve populations in Lee County. So as we moved into the survey, all of our employees were asked to prioritize or to rank exactly what they felt about certain employment factors. And overwhelmingly, pay and salary came in as number was their number-one priority. Almost 80% of employees ranked it as either their number-one or number-two priority. Their benefits came in second. Would that overwhelmingly be the second priority? The number-one was pay, salary, and then benefits, that's what the majority of people ranked. Work-life balance, work environment, and then making an impact. You can see that work environment did actually rank pretty high on the second priority, so. Overall, people do want to make an impact in their community, that's why they work for Lee County. And then the good old important question there, I am paid fairly for the work I do. You can see it's not necessarily high and it's not necessarily low. We're pretty evenly spread. But you want people to agree with that statement. You don't want almost half to disagree with that statement. So moving forward, this really is the only portion where we saw significant disagreement. So moving forward, this really is the only portion where we saw significant disagreement. You can see here our everyday stress level. Most people rated that they were on the upper end of the stress level, but they weren't really stressed, so I guess that's a good thing. And then in terms of turnover, we have not seen people express extremely high levels of turnover. They want to stay with Lee County. So if you see here, the large, the large majority of employees are seeking to stay for the next year. They're highly satisfied with the organization, and when you look at five years, it really doesn't decrease that much. The, of course, this number could go down due to people seeking retirement. You found some people that might decrease that, but how I take that is our employees like working for Lee County. They see themselves staying, and they're not necessarily looking for reasons, so we shouldn't give them any reasons to leave. And when it came down to asking the free response questions, what cha, sorry, what added benefits would they make? A lot of discussion about insurance. The responses to all of these questions are fully in there, and I'll send you all the digital versions as well. A wide range of benefits. People want it added. And then, of course, recommended changes. The pay is the big word that shows up there, and when you look at concerns, it is also the same word that shows up in the middle. So that's all I have for you today, and I hope that you can read through this information and can understand that this is the voice of the employees of Lee County. And, yep, I can answer any questions.
Questions for, Ben, please. Commissioner Carver?
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
Since the data is not segregated, it's just a global look. If you have, we have such a diverse job requirements in different departments, I'm not sure that it doesn't mask concerns that might exist in some particular departments. Have you considered that?
It has been segregated by department, and that has been given to the assistant directors in their subsequent departments. I didn't present to you necessarily the departments here today, but that information has been given out to the department directors for their, it's not been shitty, like, each department director doesn't have access to other departments, but the county manager and assistant county managers have made that decision.
The information's been shared with the appropriate departments.
Um, yeah. I, I guess I would be curious to have access to that kind of information also because I think it gives you a clearer idea of what's happening throughout the county, and it avoids masking data. Also, are there, do you end up asking questions about what's the primary thing that you find difficult about working here or anything like that? Is that segregated data?
Um, well, there was the question about what concerns you about working for Lee County, so I think that kind of encompasses what you are seeking. If you dive into the information, there is a lot of that. The reason why we kept with these questions is because they're the same questions that were previously asked in surveys, two thousand eight, like, two thousand ten, two thousand fourteen, two thousand seventeen. So just to keep it kind of consistent, these were questions that came from the state, so.
Yeah. It's a difference between a survey where you push-
Yeah.
-and ask questions that you think are important to the management as opposed to that that may be more important to the employee. At least I be misunderstood, I think we're doing an awesome job. And what I'm looking for are things maybe that are low-hanging fruit that in a particular department may be something that would be fairly easy to reconcile. And I'm not sure what the best way is to find those things, but certainly not segregating the data or not making the segregated data available makes it hard to figure it out. Maybe we just, I need to talk a little bit later to the-
Yeah, we can definitely work something out.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
Just a comment. I'd be curious to see if after the pay study and if we're able to do something with that. I'd like, it'd be neat to see the results after that, since most of them say pays. Maybe after a pay study would be a good time to do, re-survey, at least the pay.
I, I think ideally this should be done every year, so you have an active benchmark.
Right. Thank you for your work, though, on this.
Thank you.
Commissioner Connect.
Good, thank you.
Commissioner Warbeck?
Uh, next, sir.
Commissioner Reeves?
How many people involved in the survey?
Um, like, completed the survey?
Yeah.
Uh, we had, well, we were at an eighty percent completion rate. After taking out some of the responses that weren't valid, yeah, we were at three hundred and nine.
Will you revisit those people that did not?
Um, I, it was anonymous, so I don't necessarily know who took it and who didn't.
All right.
So I, it's hard to necessarily go back and do that.
Commissioner Sharp?
Nothing.
Ben, I want to say thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
You're earning your pay, right?
I'm trying to.
Okay.
That's been a good job.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the manager's report.
Yes, I had two things. At the last meeting, I was asked about doing a history of the C C C C, library, classroom, building, and more center projects. And I had put that together along with the resolutions that were cast in the memorandum of understanding.
Castings, yeah.
So I have that for y'all to look at or to study at your leisure, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have in regards to that after you've had a chance to look at it. The other thing is Ben alluded to, we are working on the pay plan. We have gotten the first draft from our consultant and have been working through that. We wanted to see about having Mr. Hill come and present the plan. However, he is not available at the April meeting or either of our May meetings. So wanted to know if the board wants to do a specially called meeting to have him come in and do a presentation on the pay plan, or if you want staff to bring the recommendation to you at a regular meeting without Mr. Hill being here.
I asked the manager to put forth those two options and ask the board if they would consider a special meeting to sit down with the pay plan, or do you want the staff to brief us? Commissioner, Commissioner Sharp?
Either way, it's fine.
Either way?
Yep.
Commissioner Reeves?
Staff.
Staff. Commissioner Warbeck?
I think the staff can do it.
Commissioner Connect?
Staff.
Commissioner Lovick?
I think our staff more than capable.
Commissioner Carver?
Are you gonna have the data promptly enough to be able to incorporate it in the budgeting process?
Yes.
Okay, the staff, then, fine.
Okay, we've got a consensus, the staff.
Okay, we'll bring it to you hopefully at the April seven, um, the April seventeenth meeting.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's it for me.
Madam Attorney? Okay, Commissioner Comments, we'll start with Commissioner Carver.
Um, today I had a chance to attend the Chamber of Commerce Policy Luncheon, and during that luncheon, it became real obvious that there was a general inertia looking, and by the way, that was on education, Lee County General Education, both the K twelve and the Community College. And it was interesting that we had comments from the school board, representatives, business representatives, SAGA, and the chamber representatives, all emphasizing their feeling that we need a supplement for the teachers. And, and my feeling is that, just to do due diligence to that kind of overwhelming input today, that we need to make sure that we're looking carefully at the impact of the supplement on the, on the budget, which may mean that basically we're looking at what it would cost at different levels or something to that effect. And again, I'm, I'm emphasizing the fact that this, I'm not saying yes to a supplement or no to a supplement, I'm just saying there's an awful lot of interest in our, in our community for this. The other thing is that my experience in looking at what's happening on the school board is that I'm gaining an awful lot of confidence in the kind of things that they're recommending, and they are really doing a lot of due diligence to dig deep into what they feel are ways to improve what we're doing. And I can tell that they are definitely leaning in that direction also. So I just want to be able to say at the end of the day, we've looked really carefully at what that supplement, what kind of impact it would have on the budget, and we can argue succinctly as to why we're either for it or against it. And I, I don't know how to bring that about other than to make that request, and if we need to have a motion or something to that effect, I'd be willing to do that at a later date.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lovick, come out, comments?
There again, just to our folks that came out tonight to voice their opinions, and I want to give kudos to this commission, our Board of Commissioners here, for doing your research on the things that came up tonight. I think that's important, that we come together in the end, but we did our own research and came up with the same decisions on that we made tonight. But I think that's a great job on each one of our parts on that. Thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Well, everyone has a hap, a happy and safe and blessed Easter. Until next, thank you.
Commissioner Warbeck?
Yeah, I know Mr. Vaughn left, but I did wanna, at least in my motions, wasn't able to kind of explain how I felt. I'm not against RV parks, just against the location in which he was wanting to do it. And he brought up an interesting point in the Y M C A needing places to bring for summer camps and stuff, and, I mean, I hope that he, if that's something he's actually interested in doing, that our kids do need places to be able to go and do, so if he wants to maybe go in that venture, something to think about.
Commissioner Reeves?
I think we're spending enough for places for kids to go already in Lee County, so I don't know how a RV park would go out.
I wasn't meaning an RV park, I'm saying if he would like to do adventure, no, children don't need to be on an eighty-person campsite RV park. I just meant he brought up the point that he thought his spot was gonna be a good thing for, I mean, there really isn't much camping or anything, summer camps for children in Lee County, so.
Parks and Rec.
Thank you. When will we, I don't have my note in front, when will we start budget meetings?
The first meeting is scheduled the day of May fifteenth prior to our regular meeting. I think we have one scheduled at four that afternoon.
All right.
It's our first one.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you to Mr. Ree, for the, Mr. Reeves, for the motion for to go ahead with the library, with the, even though we had some extra considerable extra expense there, but, uh, and thank you guys for, you know, agreeing and us having a consensus to, to do that, because I think it's, I think it's very important to have a centerpiece for the community with the library and the time that the library committee puts into it. I just think this, that was a good gesture on everyone's part to be able to go forward with that.
Thank you, sir. Anything else? Okay, I just want to share with you a letter that I received from the governor. It says, Dear Chairman Smith, thank you for your efforts to make Lee County as well as North Carolina a better place to live. Parks and recreation provide many benefits for our people, including better health, cleaner air and water, and more opportunities for families and communities to spend time together. I am pleased to announce that the North Carolina Parks and Recreation Authority has approved a matching grant in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars from the Accessibility for Parks program for the O T Sloan Accessibility Project. Ms. Mavis Craig, chairperson of the Parks and Recreation Authority, will contact you with her congratulations as well as information about how to begin the project. We look forward to assisting you in meeting the park and recreation needs in your community. With kind regards, I am very truly yours, Roy Cooper, Governor, North Carolina. And I thought that was very nice. I did give him a handwritten note thanking him for the, for the notice as well as helping with our Parks and Rec. I do want to say to everyone, this is the Easter holiday season. Please drive safely, wear your seat belts, and no speeding. With that, I will take a motion for adjournment. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Excuse me. We have two closed sessions.
Make a motion and go on now.
Motion for a closed session.
We move to go on a closed session per Carolina General Statute one four three dash three one eight point one one eight three to preserve attorney-client privilege and one four three dash three one eight point one one eight five to discuss acquisition of real property. Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying, to go on closed session, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in closed session. Thank you very much.
And we've got room one oh three reserved for closed session. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
We are now back in open session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion been made to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're now adjourned. Thank you very much.[1673.61]